Hello and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 5th. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the republic of this country, to the Constitution of the United States, and to the citizens of this country.
Thank you. Please be aware, this meeting is being streamed on our YouTube channel, and the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. To start the meeting, the first agenda item is public comment. So this is the opportunity for raising an issue or asking a question of the board or staff for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So is anyone with a public comment? Mr. Lyons?
Good evening, members of the board. Here representing State Foresight Farm, there are a couple of concerns we just have. Number one, we would like to petition the township to deny any demolition permit on 905 West Town Road, considering its enormous historical significance, and as we try to discern a clear and constructive pathway forward. It's very troubling to us that he has faced a hearing in which he was cited for $42,000 in citations. And one of the questions I did have was, of those $42,000 in citations, did they in fact include code violations concerning the roof and the failure on his part to protect the interior, like from people entering the property? That was a question we had. And also regarding the TARP, to prevent further destruction of this asset, we had asked in June if there was any way we can ask him to secure the roof so no further deterioration occurs. And I believe that is our main points for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Silas. Chris, do you, or Chris, do you have any information relative to the violations?
I do not know which ones he found him liable on, but I can provide that information to you tomorrow. So Warren, my office handled it, and I didn't go to the hearing where the judge assessed the fine, so I can provide that information.
And the general nature of the citations that were filed all related to the property maintenance code and were to the general condition of the property?
Yeah. I mean, if I had to guess, I think yes, he would have found him liable for the ones that he cited. For the roof, for the failure to secure the roof, and failure to secure the, to keep it so that somebody couldn't get in. Those were two of the sections of the code that I know he was cited for. So I would believe that his fines would have, so each section of the code warranted, we requested a specific, you know, set fine for. So I'm assuming that he found him liable of those, guilty of those violations and imposed a fine for that, but I can get to the specific details.
Do we know that if a lien can be placed on...
No, this is not, this is a criminal fine. You cannot place liens on real estate for criminal fines. If it was a civil fine, then, and there was something in the statute that allowed it to be placed as a lien on the property, then it could, but as a criminal fine, they're not then, they're not entitled to be recorded against a property as a real estate lien.
Generally speaking, the property maintenance code is enforced criminally.
Do we know if the judge required correction of the property maintenance code violations within a set period of time?
No, that's not, that wasn't what he was there to adjudicate. He was there to specifically just adjudicate, was he liable, was he guilty of violating those particular property maintenance code sections, and if so, what was the appropriate fine that can be awarded? He, at the district court, does not have the authority to impose an order, an equitable order stating, you know, you must do it within a certain timeframe, and that has to come from the court of common pleas. I have seen district justices say, well, I'll hold off on imposing the fine, and I'll give you a certain timeframe to abate the violation, and if you do that, I won't impose such a high fine, but he did not do that in this case.
I think there was an action from a previous meeting, it may actually have been in the minutes for approval, that we were going to follow up with the property maintenance company, the township was going to follow up with the property maintenance company and ask about the security, securing the roof.
I did, and at this juncture, they've decided they're not taking any more ownership of maintaining the property.
Okay, so, did they say they were no longer working for the property owner?
No, they just indicated that they weren't going to take any further action. They're not the owner of the property, subject to the enforcement action, it's the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Is there anything that would conclude the township from issuing a permit to do demolition? Do they have outstanding liens upon the property?
Under the Blight Act, if you're money owed to the township, the township can legally deny the issuance of any kind of permit that's covered under the building code.
So at this point, then, the township isn't in a position to deny a permit to demolition?
But not because of the historic nature of the property, because of the failure to pay the trash fees.
Exactly.
But you keep referring to trash fees, the roof and the lack of securing the house itself...
Those were criminal fines, that's what we're saying, that's criminal fines.
But that's, but you said trash.
Right, he owes trash fees. So under the Neighborhood Blight Act, you can, you can, the municipality can withhold the issuance of any permit, whether it's a demo permit, a building permit, a zoning permit, use and occupancy permit, all of those permits can be withheld if there are utility bills, service bills owed to the municipality. So in this case, there's no public sewer, but he has not paid the trash fee upwards of $6,000 some dollars. So until that's paid, demo permit could be withheld. There is another provision in the Neighborhood Blight Act that if there's a substantial violation of a code section, and the property owner was given notice and has not cured that within six months, that's another basis. So we could also withhold it, because definitely those property maintenance code violations, he's been notified of, and they, there's a definition in the act of serious code violation that these would, these would meet that definition. So we do have another basis to withhold a permit. But it's a catch-22 for using the not way, because if some of the code violations he could abate by demolishing the structure, you know, so that's...
But that would be upwards of like $250,000 in a cost to do a demo, but yet he's saying that he can't pay these $72,000 in citations. We can't say what the cost would be, there have been no demolition permits, to the best, like, to the best of my knowledge, there have been no demo permits submitted for that. Yeah, we are not aware of any permits that have been submitted on that property, permit applications, excuse me.
Ms. Ryan, I got a question. Would you mind coming up to the mic, first everyone can hear you? Thank you.
Barbara Reinhardt, Siltin Road, I think my question was answered, but with regard to liens, is it only on that property because he also owns two other properties, and his own home went up for share of sale last month? So there will be other liens?
No, we can't, we don't have right now, the only liens that can be filed against his property are for services provided by this municipality, and it can only be this West Ocean property. We don't have the authority...
So it also varies what kind of mortgage lien game he's playing?
Well, we have no, we have, this township has no say in what he does with his property in Berwyn. Yeah. And that's, that's his, that's his game he plays, with all of his mortgages. He takes them up to the point of sale, and then he pays it off to avoid the sale. He's done it three times with the property in West Ocean, that's just the game he plays. I don't understand why, but it's none of our business for his Berwyn now.
Okay, so that wouldn't count as a lien?
No, no.
He's still playing that game? Thank you.
Trying to answer the public comment, I have a question. Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number four, possible approval of a special event for West Chester University, and Chris is going to introduce this.
Mr. Chairman, before the board, this evening is consideration of a special event permit for West Chester University's brand rally, Under the Lights event on August 22nd. Representatives from West Chester University are present this evening to answer any questions that the board may have. Dr. Julie Dietrich with the university has been in communication with both myself and self and Mike McCarthy, our township fire marshal. Ms. McCarthy is also here this evening to answer any questions that the board may have. And due to the involvement of a fireworks display, it's before the board this evening for approval. We've been provided with the following items from the university, which are the special event permit application, a map outlining where the fireworks are being displayed, information on the vendor performing the fireworks show and their license, and a flyer for the event. I've outlined information regarding the event that's been provided, including that they've been in contact with Good Fellowship Ambulance Company regarding this event, and have submitted the required form for their service, and they've also been in touch with the West Chester Fire Department regarding this event, and are also coordinating, the Department of Public Safety is also coordinating this with local police departments. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the board, if there's any questions or any comments that the board has.
Well, members, do you have any questions or comments about this special event permit application?
So we'll have a police presence there?
That's my understanding, is that correct, Seth?
Yes. Now, was this, I believe this is the second year that you've done this, is that correct?
If you might go up to the microphone, Seth, thank you.
This is, well, good evening, members of the board. I'm Seth Abbot, Board Vice President, University of Advanced Technology, and I'm a colleague, Dr. Leah Tobin here, who's also a part of the program. Just want to say, this is our second year of doing fireworks. I do think it's important for the board to know that it is an event that we're hosting for our students, to welcome them back, but this year, what we're doing, by the guise of our new administration, we're being more inclusive to the community.
Did you took the microphone out, please?
Yes, oh, there you go. We're being more inclusive with our community members. Leah can speak a little bit about the events, but we are opening it up to members of the community to come along, come on in. We're having food trucks, fireworks...
...incomparable to ramp bands?
And we want folks to come in, right? It's free of charge, and we want our community members to come in and enjoy, we're being very intentional about how we're doing, building community around the university, so...
So is this the same, for the fireworks, was it the same location as last year?
Same. That wasn't actually, it was several years ago, but it's the same location on the backside of the stadium.
Same, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Were there any public safety issues at that time?
None whatsoever.
So it sounds like the mic, quite a few people attending, is there going to be a traffic control issue on New Street there, is, how are you planning for that?
Yeah, so, I mean, our public safety department will handle the traffic like we do during any of our home games. I don't anticipate it being as many people as we have during homecoming, and we manage all of that traffic, so it'll be the same way with that.
Okay. Mike, do you have any concerns or issues looking at the permit or knowing about the event?
Nah, if there's anything additional, I'll look at it every week, and I'll follow up with a phone call later.
Yeah, is the vendor doing the fireworks, is he well-known in this area?
I'm not familiar with them, but I do know that they've done fireworks, you know, in the county and everything, and seem legit and everything.
Okay.
All the proper certifications and they have them over here.
All right. Any other questions from the board? If anyone in attendance has a question for the university staff or our fire marshal? All right, well, thank you very much, I'll try and make myself...
I just want to say, come on out, come on out, please, and have free food and enjoy the festivities. More to talk, thanks so much.
So, we need to make a motion, is a board member willing to make the motion to approve the special event permit for the West Chester University's Round Rally, Under the Lights event?
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Right, so Mr. Harman made the motion, and Ms. Smith seconded it. Is there any final chants of comments from the board on the, on the motion? Okay, then we'll take the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there anyone against the motion? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So we move on to agenda item number five, possible, discussion of possible approval of constable service agreements for West Ocean Township. And with us this evening is Lieutenant Grandizio. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Grandizio, do you want to explain the constable agreements?
So essentially, the township police department utilizes constables mostly for warrant services on behalf of the township or transportation of defendants when they're in custody, back to the township or to judges for trial proceedings. We have existing constables over the years, we've used them for quite some time, and this would just be to add two new constables to our list, because the ones we had been relying on have become less reliable over the years, just due to their other commitments.
Very good. And the, these constable agreements, are they standard agreement? Ms. Camp, have you looked at these, or...
I actually drafted them, so where the code department got involved was, gosh, that was a while ago, the court of common pleas stopped issuing warrants for municipal code violations. So it used to be that the county sheriff's department would handle that, and it became very costly, primarily because of the borough's parking tickets. There were so many that were being served that when Judge McElroy was the president judge, he stopped the policy of the county paying to issue warrants for municipal code violations. So when that happened, I was asked to draft this agreement, we worked with the constables at the time to come up with best practices, understanding the fees, understanding the process. So we did it for the borough first, and then as other municipalities needed this service, we tailored this agreement for those purposes. So that's my involvement in this agreement, and then obviously now the police will utilize it as well. But the constable practice is very standard, there's a handbook that the county follows that all of the constables have to adhere to, have the insurance requirements, the fees are all structured. So it is a, when I didn't realize that until got involved in this process, learning that, you know, everybody sort of follows the same procedure, so, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the board?
Just one question, now, we have two folks that are suggesting that we take home these constables, Glenn Markley and David Cox, have they been elected, or were they appointed?
They're elected officials, and they've been around for quite some time, and they're quite experienced in the private profession.
I'm just sure it's with the municipality, where they elected from, you know?
I'm not sure, they're home municipality.
I believe Constable Markley is from Parksburg, I believe, and Constable Cox is from the southern end of Chester County.
I wasn't, I didn't realize that you could utilize other constables from other municipalities here in the municipality.
So I wasn't aware of that either, we've been using our elected constable if we needed any sort of service, but we were notified that in the fall at some point that he was giving up the insurance to continue to perform that service. So he had actually recommended to us at that time, Constable Cox, and when this came up, I talked to Captain D'Amidio, and he recommended having agreements with both of them.
I've been practicing for 30 years, and we've used Mr. Cox for all of our service that we need to do for civil matters, he's extremely dependable and reliable, so I can speak to him, I don't know Mr. Markley.
Are you equally developed, I have nothing but good things to say.
No, I've been, I've heard good things about Mr. Mark as well. So I'm just curious, it's like, how this played out, so if the constables are elected, when is their term up, and when their term is up, does that mean their house is all...
These guys were not elected as West Ocean constables.
Right, so, but when their term up is up in their home municipality, does that mean that they can no longer serve as constables?
I don't think so. I don't think you have to be elected to serve as a constable if you have all the criteria that are needed, and follow...
There's continuing education, there's...
Yeah, there's a checklist of what they have to, wow, proof of election to office, maybe they do, I guess.
Says duly elected or appointed.
Yeah, I think they can be appointed, as long as they have whatever the law requires for them to have as far as insurance and licensing, whatever, the continuing education, you can appoint them. They don't have to be your elected constable to serve in the purpose for which this agreement is having them serve.
Any other questions?
Well, this is a term for only one year, correct? For us, it's one year, okay.
But then it's evergreen after that, the term of the agreement may be automatically renewed for a successive one-year term, provided the township sends the calls, already knows they intend to renew, so you can just renew it.
Correct.
Yeah. Mike, can we just wait and see if there's any more questions? Is there any more questions from the board? Okay, so, Mike, you had a question, so would you mind coming to the mic?
I'm just curious, hi, Margie Swart, I'm just curious, is it a flat fee to serve, or how do they get paid? There's a...
Fee schedule that's attached that identifies what service they provide and what the fee is. It's attached to the agreement.
Okay, and then who pays that fee?
It's confusing, it's ultimately, the township pays it, but they recover it from the defendant.
Okay. And I'm just curious, so when you mentioned the borough, do some of these service fees actually cost more to serve than the actual parking ticket?
Sometimes, really.
Okay, just curious.
So like, for example, the fee for, the service fee for a warrant, according to the fee schedule, is $15, so...
Yeah, any parking ticket's much higher than $15, or something that'd start at $30.
So, all five and 10?
Yeah.
In an example such as West Town Road, are we using a constable to serve that address or that property owner with...
Well, so that's, that's one of the situations where he did not, we went to court, the district court constable served citations, we then had judgments from four years ago, whatever, criminal fines, I should say, and one of the things we asked the court was, well, why isn't someone going and picking him up on these warrants? So this can be used in that process, I believe.
Okay, but he would ultimately, or anyone would ultimately pay that fee?
Yes, the fees that are, yes, yes.
Taxpayers aren't...
Yes, the taxpayers are not paying that, that is something that gets added on to the cost that the defendant must pay.
Right.
At least, for my code violations, I can speak to that, I don't know if that works for the police.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah, same thing.
It needs to roll into the tax system.
Yep.
Lieutenant Grandizio, do you know how many times you need the services of a constable in a month, or a year, or something?
I would say it could likely be a weekly thing, if not several times a month at least. The biggest issue we have is with minimum manpower and with trying to keep officers on the street dealing with emergent things, if we have a defendant that's picked up on a warrant in Oxford, we may have to say, hey, sorry, you have to let him go, because we don't have somebody available to drive to Oxford for an hour and a half to go getting, where in this case, we will have somebody we can call that's hopefully reliable, that will say, yep, I'll go get him, email me the warrant, and I'll take him to court for you.
Okay.
But yeah, at least monthly, several times, but I would say, strong probability weekly.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to make the motion to approve the constable service agreements with Constable Glenn Markley, Glenn Markley and Constable David Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Is there any comments, questions from anyone in attendance? Okay, then we'll take the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to agenda item number six, which is discussion of possible approval of Resolution Number 25, 2025, granting file subdivision and land development approval for two lots subdivision of an existing three-acre parcel at 513 Susan Drive. Brian's going to explain this to us, thank you, Brian.
Good evening, in front of you tonight is the final plan for 513 Susan Drive, this plan came in four years earlier this year for preliminary plan approval. Since that time, the applicant has worked to address the final plan comments. In front of you is my letter dated July 2nd, which has a couple minor outstanding items, which are, the zoning officer has said that she has no more comments, there's a, there's a couple minor cleanups in the legal descriptions, the standard M&amp;M agreements will be filed for each lot, for the stormwater B&amp;Ps on each lot. The proposal is to create two lots from the existing parcel, and on the two lots, there'll be underground stormwater management facility here, and then one here for the back lot, so there's two lots, the back lot is, is, we go back to the plan layout. So the rear lot is a fly lot, which is accessed through a driveway, and the front lot is in this location. They'll be under separate ownership, there's no shared facilities, the plans are being recorded, that the lots have to be constructed one by one, they can have, won't have to be finished before the other one can start, so that's the way the plans are going to record, so one, one house, I believe, if I remember correctly, it's the front house gets built first, and the back house gets built second. That's the way it's been proposed. We have a letter with a couple comments yet to be outstanding from HRG, which is minor for the sewer.
So Brian had a question on that, so you say there's not a shared facility, but one of the comments from HRG seems to be a lack of priorities to whether there's a shared sewer lateral, or there's going to be two independent sewer laterals from each lot. If so, would that lateral have a separate easement through the first lot?
So there is two separate laterals, this is the lateral, the SUV you're coming down from the back, from the rear lot, and there is an easement, the lateral without the tie into the main, and then the second lot, the front, the front lot, ties in, in the far foreman property.
Okay.
Two individual laterals, and there is an easement.
Because there's two separate tie-ins to the existing sewer main?
Yeah, and I'll show you in the plan. Right here is the sanitary, proposed sanitary sewer easement along the right way, to allow the lateral from the back lot, tie in. So there is a sewer, and there is a description, the agreement will have to be provided to the township solicitor as part of...
Authority? Is that an easement for the sewer authority?
Private.
So the easement across lot one?
Yes, for the benefit of lot two. So that's going to be one of the, one of the pieces of information provided to the solicitor for the project documents.
Okay.
And is that stated in HRG's letter?
No, it's in my letter.
Okay. How much is covered in your letter, it's covered in conditions?
I had a comment regarding the, under the decision number two, right now it states that prior to release of an earth disturbance and building permit for each lot, applicant shall execute a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement. I added, and be responsible for maintenance of stormwater operations in the future.
That's what the agreement says.
That's all included in the agreement.
So you don't need it in that document?
No, because the agreement says that.
Okay.
And the agreement, the stormwater operation maintenance agreement gets recorded against the property, so any future owner is obligated to maintain...
The standard of them agreements will be filed for each lot, for the stormwater BNP's on each lot. The proposal is to create two lots from the existing parcel and on the two lots, there'll be a underground stormwater management facility here and then one here for the back lot. So there's two lots. The back lot is, is, we go back to the plan layout. So the rear lot is a fly lot, which is accessed through a driveway and the front lot is in this location. They'll be under separate ownership. There's no shared facilities. The plans are being recorded that the lots have to be constructed one by one. They cannot be, won't have to be finished before the other one can start. So that's the way the plans are going to record. So one, one house, I believe, if I remember correctly, it's the front house gets built first and the back house gets built second. That's the way it's been proposed. We have a letter with a couple of comments yet to be outstanding from the HRG, which is minor for the sewer.
So Brian had a question on that. So you say there's not a shared facility, but one of the comments from HRG seems to be a lack of priorities to whether there's a shared sewer lateral or there's going to be two independent sewer laterals from each lot. If so, would that lateral have a separate easement through the first lot?
So there is two separate laterals. This is the lateral, the S U C here coming down from the back, from the rear lot, and there is an easement. The lateral without the tie into the main. And then the second lot, the front, the front lot ties in, in the, in the far corner of the property.
Okay.
Two individual laterals and there is an easement.
Because it's two separate tie-ins to the existing sewer main.
Yeah, and I'll show you in the plan. Right here is the sanitary, proposed sanitary sewer easement along the right away to allow the lateral from the back lot to tie in. So there is a sewer and there is a description. The agreement will have to be provided to the township solicitor as part of.
The authority. Is that an easement for the sewer authority?
Private.
So the easement across lot one?
Yes, for the benefit of lot two. So that's going to be one of the, one of the pieces of information provided to the solicitor for the project documents.
Okay.
For review.
And is that stated in HRG's letter?
No, it's in my letter.
Okay. How much is covered in your letter? It's covered in conditions?
I had a comment regarding the, under the decision number two. Right now it states that prior to release of an earth disturbance and building permit for each lot, applicant shall execute a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement. I added, and be responsible for maintenance of stormwater operations in the future.
That's what the agreement says.
That's all included in the agreement.
Oh, so you don't need it in the, in that document?
No, because the agreement says that.
Okay.
And the agreement, the stormwater operation maintenance agreement gets recorded against the property, so any future owner is obligated to maintain those items.
Okay, and we don't have to reiterate it?
Yes.
Brian, Brian, can you show me in the, the decision draft that you have where you specifically referenced the issue of this, this easement? It's not clear to me, are you looking at it?
So that would be one of the easement documents that would be in my regular for recording letter they have to provide. So I have it on my list of legal documents for the end. It goes with the sewer agreement, the land development agreement, the financial screen agreement. There'll be an easement agreement as well in that document. It's not in my letter, but it will be in my letter that goes back and forth to crystallize to the applicant for final documents to submit.
Well, let's just add, just add a condition.
So we on number four then, right? So what language are we at?
Yeah, we could add a whole new condition that says that applicant shall provide an easement agreement for the shared lateral across lot one. Either one, you can put it to the end of four, we can add a new sentence, new condition.
Brian, are they going to be sharing the draft with you?
No.
Other questions from the board?
There's to be two driveway entrances. One is in the flag and one is right here. So yeah, there's two separate entrances, completely separate ownership, no shared maintenance responsibilities.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, there are representatives from the applicant here this evening. Is there any questions for them?
Okay, we'll see if there's any more questions. Brian's doing a good job so far, so. All right, so is there any statement or any comments you would like to address to the board about this application?
No, we're, we're in agreement with the, the terms of the.
Very good. Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution number 25, 2025, which grants file subdivision and land development approval for this two lot subdivision at 513 Susan Drive. Thank you, John. So any public comment or questions about the motion?
John, do you want to add that?
With, with the addition of the applicant should provide an easement agreement for the shared sewer lateral. Okay. Is anyone, is anyone in attendance with a comment or question about the motion or this application?
When are you hoping to start construction?
I don't know, probably a couple of months once we got all this figured out.
All right, any other comments or questions? Then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Next is agenda item number seven, discussion of possible approval of resolution number 26, 2025, which would grant preliminary final subdivision and land development approval for a lot line change to subdivide 20,000 square feet between 807 Goshen Road and 948 North Hill Drive. And I think, was this with you again, Brian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Brian can start, I'll just note there was a typo on the agenda. The actual amount being subdivided net is 4,467 square feet.
Four thousand, what was it?
4,467 square feet. And that's the, that's the net which Brian will review, but I apologize for that error.
Thank you.
So in front of you tonight is a lot line change between two properties, which are 807 Goshen Road and property on North Hill. Current property line is this gray line you see here. I'm tracing, that's the current property configuration. So there's a little corner here and then this black piece that is, this back piece is associated with the North Hill. This piece is associated with the Goshen, Goshen Road, 807. Proposal is to just take 807 Goshen Road and extend it straight back. As part of the proposal, the township will also be getting right away dedicated in front of both properties to bring it up to current standards for the right way. The half right wing with the horse on that side of the road. Which no construction proposed in part of this plan is just a, a transaction to create two new conforming lots, one of which continued the lot line straight through. So there's no construction proposed. They're both existing lots. They're both had existing plows on. It's just a transaction of swapping land between two properties.
Okay.
So no stormwater practices would be required or anything as a result of the?
Brian, there's a note on the drawing that says a proposed 20-foot wide sanitary easement, but it points to just this lot line. Is there any explanation there you can provide?
So this area you see shaded is an existing private sanitary sewer easement. And I believe it was there between these two lots to allow access to this easement right, you see right here. This easement ends at the property line. So they're, by as part of this agreement, they're extending the easement over this portion because this property now would not have access to the easement that was already on the deed in their favor. It's a private easement, it's not for the authority and I did confirm with my mothbodersness. But I think there is a, there is an easement here to allow in the future something comes through, that there's nothing back here that's theirs.
Okay, so that little piece there, that's the new easement, right? Thank you.
Right here, this is, this is the new easement now that allows 807 Goshen to still access this part of the easement, which in the deed of this property was already in their favor.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone?
Question, Brian. So in your letter, you talk about the dedication documents. So what do you do when you issue your letters to say what you need to be able to release the plans? You say, I need deeds of dedication and then you get those.
I have the, I have the, um, what I was going to say is I have the legal scriptures that we stamped. You'll be copied all of them and then you coordinate with you for, for the deeds, the time to the deeds.
And the deeds have to be tendered to you before the plans would be released to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I will make a motion to approve our resolution number 26, 2025, granting preliminary final subdivision and land development approval for the lot line subdivision of 4,467 square feet between 807 Goshen Road and 948 North Hill Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. Is there anybody in attendance with a question or comment?
It's the surveyor that offered the plan. I have no questions.
Okay, that's right. All right. Now we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Agenda item number eight, discussion of possible authorization to advertise a proposed amendment to the West Goshen Township zoning ordinance to permit limited distilleries in certain zoning districts and define criteria for their use. And let's see, can I show up here? Kristin?
So this came before you, I think at the last meeting. The company is proposing to lease some space and wants to operate a limited distillery. In their correspondence, they did not identify the C4 district, but when I went back and modeled this after the ordinance that you guys adopted or that the board adopted to allow microbreweries and brewery pubs, those actually are permitted in the C4 district as well. So that's what I followed. So this is, I just really followed the same standards. So this would be adding a definition for what a limited distillery is, allowing it as a use by right in your C2, C4, I1, I2, and I3 districts. And then creating a new subsection under 84-57.26, specifically C. So what's in paragraph B is already in the code. I just added a new paragraph C to identify standards for limited distilleries. And again, pretty much modeled them after what we did for the, for the breweries. So there was another section of your code that deals with outdoor dining as an accessory use and when that's permitted. So we added the ability for limited distilleries to also have outdoor dining. So that was the other section that had to be added to this. But I did want to bring it to your attention that when the applicant came before you at the last meeting, in their correspondence, they had not identified C4 as being a district because, um, I don't know why, but. Yeah, but it is currently, you do permit the, um, the microbreweries and brewery pubs in your C4 district. So to keep it consistent, that's how I did it, but I did highlight that in yellow to bring it to your attention and make, and make sure you're comfortable with that.
So of course I need to ask a question. Where is C4 in the township?
Give me a second.
Brian, I'm ready for this.
Well, Brian's doing that. Does any of the board members have a comment or question for Kristin on the draft ordinance?
Just to clarify, now this is, tonight we're getting an authorization to advertise this ordinance, but it's contingent upon review by the West Goshen Township Planning Commission?
And Chester County, and Chester County planning, yes.
Supposedly come back with some changes or regular changes.
So this is really just to authorize it to move forward to that process, right? Is that what you're looking to do, Chris?
No, that's correct. So we would not issue any kind of legal advertisement for the ordinance until we receive comments back from both entities and address any of those comments that there may be.
So then this may come for the board again.
Correct. And also then to authorize you to advertise it from here. Yep.
Well, if there are no substantive changes, then we would just go forward with the authorization tonight to advertise it. But obviously if there are substantive changes that are recommended, then we'll bring it back before the board.
This gives the board a chance to look at the proposed addition of limited distilleries into this existing.
This, um, the outdoor dining and accessory use to a restaurant, we already have that language?
Yeah. Yep, that 57.11 is there today. What we're adding is that we added the limited distillery and having the ability to also have that.
Essentially mirrors the provisions related to a microbrewery or brew pub that were in the zoning ordinance already. And Brian brought up the zoning ordinance on the display screen. The C4 zoning district is generally in the Westchester pipe core.
The light pink you see along the corner, that's C4.
Hey, we already talked about that.
No, it's, C4 is new.
I know, we talked about that last meeting.
We talked about C2, we talked about the C2 district.
C2 is the, is the brown areas you see here and here.
Cause when we had the, and when we had the land planning committee, Brian had brought up that, Brian had brought up the commercial zoning district that was allowed to. At that time, we just caught C2, but as Kristin was preparing, she caught C4 as well.
Okay. Now one question from the board? Is the board member willing to make a motion to, uh, proceed with possible authorization for this ordinance subject to, uh, planning commission review by the Township Planning Commission and the Chester County Planning Commission?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Nate. Is there a second? I will second it. Is there anybody in attendance with a question or comment about the motion? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Uh, next on is agenda item number nine, discussion of possible authorization to advertise a proposed ordinance to merge the administration and roads and sewer employees pension plans into a single non-uniform employee's pension plan. Okay, so I see Chris, you have the board down, which I presume means me for this one. So. Uh, so before the board tonight is consideration to authorize the advertisement of proposed ordinances to merge the existing administration roads and sewer employees pension plans into a single non-uniform employee's pension plan. Uh, for background information, during the exit conference of the Township Pension Plan Audit with the P A Audit General's Office, a verbal recommendation was made by them to merge the two plans. The board approved a proposal from Conrad Segal Actuaries, who are the township's pension actuarial firm, to prepare the necessary documents to merge the two plans into one. Ashley Wise, the township's actuary with Conrad Segal, provided the necessary documents for review, which were provided in the Republican Board packets. And there are a couple of issues that we will need to discuss and deal with with respect to the changes. As it pertains to adoption, please, there is, uh, the two ordinances have been provided. This plan, this, the new plan document is proposed to be effective October the 1st, 2025. And the recommendation is based on the fact that this will align with the start of a new quarter, which will be cleaner for moving assets. There will be time needed to merge the planned assets in both PNC, who is our investment advisor, and Bryn Mawr Trust, who will handle the pension distributions to pensioners. And we will need to have time for staff to discuss with employees the change that's proposed. As previously noted, remember this was before the board before, merging these plans does not change any of the benefits outlined in the plan documents or the vesting schedule. The only intention here is to create a single unified plan, which allows for easier administrative use and should reduce slightly some costs associated with preparing documents for these plans going forward. So, um, are there any questions from the board? There is one issue we do need to discuss, but I just wanted to see if there's any general questions at this point.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, can you estimate the cost savings to the township and any other advantages to the township on merger of the two plans?
From a dollar, from a dollar figure, I can't estimate the, I can't estimate off the top of my head what the savings would be. But from a logistical standpoint, it would result in, you don't have to do two act, two of five valuation, so there would be cost savings there. If there are any kind of amendments that would have to be done currently, you have to do two ordinances. This would streamline it down only to one, which would reduce our preparation and advertising costs. Um, and there would be additional savings in terms of doing, um, the, uh, the additional reporting that's required each year. It's more of a question of thing of logistical items because currently, as of right now, there are people that draw on both pension plans. So essentially you have two different election options, which could create problems and two different beneficiary options. So this will just streamline everything into one. And it won't have any sort of impact on valuation because we asked Ms. Wise to run a value, an estimated valuation based on the first market values, and they were relatively the same.
And there's no difference between the plans as far as benefits that would require reconciliation?
No, there are no, the vesting schedules are identical, the benefit payment schedules are identical, everything's identical. The contributions are identical as well.
And the funding ratio of the plans will not be negatively impacted in any way?
I believe they're within 0.3% of each other. So the combined will be roughly, they're both roughly 84% and the combined is roughly 84%.
Good questions. Are there any other questions? Okay, so I have two follow-ups here. So in the draft ordinance, there's a blank relative to the trustee of the trust, which I, my understanding is that is the board that supervises. That's on page two of the draft ordinance. Is that your understanding? You have it's correct.
Well, the one. Formal aid. Okay. I'm going to venture, right, employees, yeah.
We good?
Yeah, we, I mean, we have, you are the trustee of that?
I believe it would be the board.
The board. It's, um, section three, Christopher Becher is the chief administrative officer for the township. And for the Township Administrative Road Employees Pension Plan is therefore appointed as the chief administrative officer of the combined plan. Um, but the final sentence is a blank and it should be the board supervisors is confirmed as the trustee of the trust.
That's correct.
I have a question. Do you want this to, and actually it's interesting, the legislature just, excuse me, the governor just signed a month ago, second-class townships now their ordinances can be effective immediately. The second-class township code was amended so that your ordinance is going to take effect immediately, but do you want this not to take effect until October 1st?
That would be my recommendation, so that we can sort of make everything, we, I talked to our H R director, Jen Lancer, about this and kind of we were of the opinion to do it with a court.
Yes, so. So this, tonight we're looking to see if the board will approve this for advertisement, right? But this is not a, this does not need to go to the planning commission, right?
You need them anywhere.
You said just with the board.
You need to advertise the seven days part of your hearing. So if you could adopt this, that's your August 19th meeting. The effective date of the ordinance would not be.
That's what we want. Yeah.
Just to give you time to, give you time to all recipients and all that.
So the, the one other issue that needs to be addressed is the, uh, Ashley Wise, the actuary who prepared the combined documents. Suggest, but look, be the suggestion to look for the board to consider whether we want to change the, um, minimum lump sum cash out threshold from $5,000 to $7,000. She doesn't give an explanation as to whether that's pretty typical these days or not, but she just says, um, it's easy to change that if we need to, obviously.
And again, I spoke with, I spoke with Ms. Lancer about this. She said that's never coming to play.
Never.
So we can probably leave it the way it is. But again, it was a recommendation that came from the actuary. Bring it to the board.
What's your reason? Why would you recommend that?
I don't remember her reasoning off the top of my head. Um, I'll, I'll go back and look and follow up with the work.
Somebody who owns a township that's invested, their pension is worth less than $7,000, or more than $5,000, you can pay, get to carry that and pay them as a monthly payment versus if it's a loss, something that $5,000 unless you get a check in the night. She would, that's how I'm reading it, because it's how it's worked in the past, but.
I'll go back and look and see what Ashley sent to us and follow up, but. I'll go back and look and see what Ashley sent to us and follow up, but in speaking with Jen, she said that's never coming to play, so we can probably just keep it the way it is.
I'm all for keeping it the way it is.
Okay, any other, so those were the only questions, I believe, everything else was incorporated through the document from the combined existing documents. So, any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the proposed ordinance to merge the Administration and Roads and Sewer Employees Pension Plans into a Single Non-Uniform Employees Pension Plan. Is it a second? Thank you, Jen. Any public comment or questions? Margie?
What happens with the EDP contract, does that get rolled in?
So this is all about the payment of benefits and the vesting of benefits and everything else is for our employees. The actual management of the pension funds of PNC with EDP is not part of this. This references the use of investment advisor, et cetera, which is, that's not related.
But just for my knowledge, is the EDP contract for non-administrative employees or for sewer?
So it, the EDP contract only has three remaining pension is already in it.
And are they administration or sewer?
There is one.
One, one administration, two police.
Two police. Yeah. It's like, it was a funded like annuity for the, I don't know how many people were in it originally when it was first created, but that's one of the things we were talking about at the meeting the other day. Steve, you have a question?
So are these the only pension plans that we're funding? It'll be just one and one police?
Correct. It would go, it would go from having, it would go from having three to one for non-uniform employees, one for police employees. And again, no changes, just merging, no change to any benefits.
Are there any other questions?
I'm sorry, is that one place on sewer or for the EDP contract?
Two police, one administration.
Any other questions? Okay, are you ready to take a vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes 5-0. Next is Agenda Item Number Ten, which is discussion regarding professional service proposal to review the Westchester University master plan. And that is with Chris.
Mr. Chairman, I will start this off, and then I will sort of pass it over to Brian, since he did a lot of the research on this. So before the board this evening is discussion regarding professional, a professional service proposal to review the Westchester University master plan. As the board's aware, the university submitted their conditional use application for the master plan to both West Ocean Township and Westchester Borough pursuant to the requirements of the plan, university main campus, and early district requirements outlining the township's zoning ordinance. The applicant has granted the township and the borough an extension through November 30th to commence the hearings. As part of this process, Brian, our township engineer, recommended that a neutral third party from not affiliated with either municipality be engaged to review the plan documents. Brian was looking for entities that offer planning, civil engineering, and traffic engineering services to the components of the master plan. We provided a proposal from urban engineers. I will note that Brian reached out to three firms, and Urban Engineers was the only respondent that we received. I noted it, I'll note in there that there is, there is a provision within Section 84-145A of the township zoning ordinance related to the review of the master plan, which discusses the shared coordination of review comments, so some of the thought processes, this will address that requirement in the zoning ordinance, since both entities will be receiving the same review comments. And also, it's my understanding, the PUC was adopted before my time, but it's my understanding that it was envisioned to be looked at as like one cohesive unit, not along jurisdictional boundaries. In an effort to ensure that both municipalities are receiving comments and discussions that we've had with the Borough, would be to split those costs 50-50, and any costs associated with attendance at hearings would be billed, billed to the individual municipality. We did provide a copy of this proposal to Westchester Borough for their review and consideration.
Thank you, Chris. So just, so we initiated the conversation with the Borough, all together with them, you and Sean Metrick at the Borough, have had this conversation about how this is an appropriate approach to use, where we use a third party not affiliated with working with either the municipalities to review the entirety of the information that's being provided by the university, to assess that irrespective of the township and the Borough, and to bring their insights to both parties as part of the conditional use hearing process.
Yes, and this was really, when we sat down to do our administrative review of the application to determine that it was complete, Brian was the one who suggested this approach, and I thought it was a good idea. And when I approached Sean Metrick about it, he thought it was a good idea as well.
Okay, and do we know if our council is on board with this approach?
As far as, I don't know the inner discussions, but it's my understanding that this proposal is going to be discussed with them at one of their meetings in August.
Okay, so just to quote, just to comment on that, so as we look at this, we need to, the agreement and authorization to proceed includes both the township and the Borough, so we can't sign for them and they can't sign for us, so I'm not quite sure how that will work, but that needs, that needs to be addressed as.
I mean, I think that you guys need to decide, you're only going to go forward with it if the Borough also goes forward with it, so any motion of approval would be contingent upon the Borough also approving it.
Okay.
And the other thing I made reference, I told Chris today that I, some of these standard terms, I would seek them to change. There's typically, most contracts like these, everybody puts these same standard terms in, and the things that I always look for, the indemnification paragraph is unacceptable. We need to change that. The limitation of liability is unacceptable. They, they always try to limit their liability to the amount that you pay them, but to extend, again, this is not really a great example because they're not designing anything for you, so the ability to sue them under negligence is not really, going to really arise likely, but you don't ever want to limit your liability. If they're negligent or they breach the contract, the law says what your appropriate damages are, and it has no correlation to the amount on the contract that you pay them. So I always try to strike that, and I think insurance, I want to make sure that you see what their insurance is. We actually have that, because it just references that they have it, but I want you to know what those insurance limits are, and that was really it.
So you're used to working through this, these kind of terms and conditions, because every time we appoint a new professional service engineer for something, we ask you to go and take care of these very issues, so.
Yeah.
We should be looking for what is acceptable to us, and you have a good reference for that, so.
Right, and so if you were to approve this, again, contingent upon the Borough, but also be contingent upon them revising the standard terms that I just called out as being unacceptable.
Well, we don't really have to approve it tonight, we could ask you to work with them, make sure there's some leverage to getting these terms more acceptable to ours, and we could.
Yeah, the Borough, so what they do is they have committee meetings next week, this will likely go to their, their Smart Growth, it's called. Smart Growth handles all the development projects, so Smart Growth meets next Wednesday, and then it'll go to full council on August 19th, so I think that they will, and I will share with Sean Metrick the same concerns I have about the standard terms and conditions, so well, you have the meeting on the 19th as well, so likely we'll come back to you till your September 2nd meeting.
Yeah, I mean, September, Brian, if they get, if it's all approved and we're good to go by September the 2nd, this would give this firm a month or two to review the information.
We'd have a project kickoff meeting with them the week of the 8th of September, and give them a deadline.
Okay, because we, we're looking, I believe, with the university at conditional use hearings late November, early December, was it?
Yeah.
So that would give them two months to review it.
Okay, so that would work.
Which would be plenty of time. If you look at the last paragraph of the cover letter, it states that it's assumed it will involve two separate contracts.
Yeah.
So they, they're assuming it's going to be two separate contracts right from the start. I can also tell you, in reviewing the Borough's zoning ordinance, when I made the request to the RFP to put it together, the email, the language, the language that we have in 84-145A is very similar in their language, that they need to provide their comments to us.
Yeah, it was drafted as a, meant to be mirrored, basically.
So with those two comments mirrored by having one entity provide the comments at the same time, we've addressed it with both sides.
And one thing to keep the board, one thing to make sure the board's aware of, is we asked them to just provide hourly rates.
Yes.
Brian, Brian and I could not figure out how to determine a lump sum amount for this, so we thought the best course of action was to get a rate sheet to present to the board.
I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, Brian, but I mean, you probably have a feel for how many hours are involved to review that material, and what we could expect to see in terms of a billing.
I couldn't, I'm not sure what it's going to be, because there's, there's a lot of information, and a lot of it is traffic and planning, and there's a lot of planning documents and traffic. The stormwater is not, it's a lot of concept, not the details going to come through. That's the line I can opine on more, but as far as the review of their, their traffic boundaries, about that thing.
Can we say not to exceed, at least initially?
No.
And then come back and approve it?
But you might be able to ask them, Brian, maybe you could ask them for a guesstimate.
We didn't want to, we've talked about that, we didn't want to start sending them documents to start looking.
They haven't seen the documents.
Okay.
All they got was a request for the rate sheet with the orders requirements, so I haven't given them the documents to review, because if we didn't do that, it's bad, I didn't want to share the documents with a third party, who we're not going to consider to review it.
And Brian, Brian, I had numerous conversations with him.
They have not seen the documents that we asked them to review yet, so they couldn't even opine on, because I didn't give them the documents yet. Give them, here's the scope, here's the project, here's the orders requirements you're reviewing against, please provide you the rate sheet, and who's going to be doing the work. That's all I asked for for this exercise.
Brian, under the engineering review, they're going to do a specific analysis on traffic, site, land, development. They can do anything on environmental hazards or include that in there, because that could be very costly.
There's nothing, the conditional use application doesn't address that.
That, that's a shame.
They only have to review what was required to be submitted by the conditional use application. The environmental impact assessments, if they're required, would come in during the land development.
Land development, yeah. Yeah, this is just.
There's still be addressed during land development or somewhere along the process.
Yeah, but not as part of this process, yeah.
Yeah, similar to how Wallow was, there was information provided for conditional use, and then the details come in during land development. Land development would come to me and be reviewed the township, you would not use, this is just the overall because of the two of them together. My understanding is the way the PUC orders is written is, once it's approved as conditional use, those are the projects they're allowed to submit.
Within 10 years, right.
Within 10 years.
And, and the thing that's good is that, that detail, you are allowed to charge your consultants' costs back to them, because that's part of the land development, the MPC allows you to charge your consultant costs to the applicant, but that's not the case for conditional use.
Okay, and what would they look for from an environmental hazard standpoint? What extent would the, when it gets to that point? What would be the normal?
I don't know. I'm not sure I understand your question, the extent of what they're going to look for. It's, we have an environmental impact assessment required for any building over a certain size, which is 5,000 square feet, so they're going to do an environmental impact assessment for each land development project when they come in.
Okay.
But if the project is on one lot, they have to look at a lot three doors down, look at that lot, they don't have, they have to provide what's required currently about our ordinance. We can't require them, to my knowledge, to provide us more information than our ordinance is already required.
Right, okay.
Now, if there's something that the state of Pennsylvania requires, because it's the college, they got to do more testing for therein, that's between them and the state and LNI, how they have to test for their building purposes, because we have no control over building and that, we just have land development rights, concerning rights.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, have you any experience of working with urban engineers?
Full disclosure, I worked for them. So I have worked with four of the five people on that list, were coworkers of mine when I worked there back in two. I left the firm in 2015.
So you're not a neutral arbitrator, and if I said help, you know, through reputation of the firm?
Well, I, I tried to find firms, we reached out to Michael Baker, we reached out to Bowman because they have a planning group, and we reached out to Urban. Michael Baker didn't have anybody locally, and Bowman's planners are in North Carolina and Georgia, so they're locally to be able to work on the project and understand their stuff.
So where are urban engineers based, where's their home office?
Their home office in Philadelphia, but most of the staff works in Kinnipra.
Okay.
And I can tell you, when I talked to Sean Metrick, I mentioned him, I mentioned to the firms that we were reaching out to, this was before Brian had started soliciting proposals, Sean had no hesitation about any of them.
Okay.
Just curious, so we had an outfit that we're not in consulting, who helped us originally with the, with the master plan, would they be in a position to be able to give us?
They're architects, yeah, so we used Tim Cassidy as an architect to help with this, because he had, his experience was that he had helped with Franklin &amp; Marshall's planning when Franklin &amp; Marshall was designing new buildings, and he had had experience, understanding, drafting an ordinance for a campus. That's where his expertise came in when we were drafting the ordinance.
They don't have any good old staff that would be able to do the review of the conditional use application.
Or, you know, traffic or any of that, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in attendance with questions about this proposal, Margie?
When it comes time for the university to present the plan, can it be arranged that there's a joint meeting with urban council people and supervisors? It just seems like if all the parties were in the room at the same time, then.
We had, Chris has a response for that.
Yeah, we had discussed that early on. To be completely frank, it doesn't, it's not the most logistically viable option, and it could result in the issues with the Borough and the Township sort of bogging each other down, particularly in the Borough, because the Borough has all the housing components in there, so it could create issues. We had numerous discussions about that with the Borough, with the applicant, and it just, it might, it probably won't make logistical sense. So that's, that is a conversation that has occurred.
The university did present to the Borough's Planning Commission, and I did watch the, the presentation of that online, just if anyone wants to see the heads up, the preliminary, it's, yeah.
The Borough presented what, sorry?
The university presented the final plan, or the proposed.
The master plan?
Master plan, but it was a pretty high level, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was probably a pretty high level, but it was interesting to hear some of the comments.
Well, the board, the board's all been provided with copies of the information.
And this is just my opinion, so don't hold me to it, if we go further into this process, but when I look at the, the amount of what is proposed over this multi-year, decade-plus schedule, it's kind of an 80/20, 80% of it is in the Borough, and 20% of it is in West Ocean. So imagine a meeting where 80, 90, 100% of the people in the room are really focused on what's happening in the Borough, and are sitting there saying, oh, what about the West Ocean issues? I think it really helps to, Chris's point, to separate at that point, to make sure we're focused on the comments we've got back from this joint, this engineer looking at the whole picture, but what does it specifically mean for West Ocean?
Well, if there are two separate hearings, there would have to be a reconciliation between the results of the two hearings, correct? I mean, suppose we come up with some conditions that the Borough just don't?
We would share conditions, and one of the benefits that we have are, we both share a solicitor, so we would probably be privy to the information.
Yeah, and I'd want them to be on at least parallel paths, that you're both starting the hearings at the same timeframe, and neither party is really issuing a decision until you've shared that information. I think that's important, but your jurisdiction will be on the portions of the plan that are technically speaking to, within West Ocean. I mean, that's where the, the shared review is very helpful, so that you can all, if they come up with a suggestion, and maybe West Ocean, for whatever reason, doesn't agree, for example, like a pathway or something that leads from West Ocean to the Borough, or vice versa, the goal is that you all sort of talk together and come up with the plan that makes sense for the campus as a whole, and make sure you're all in agreement with how that's going to be implemented in your niche respective municipality. So it does require coordination and cooperation, and yes, I think that we need to make sure that before anyone's going to issue a decision, you know, you, you get their input on, which is not unusual to do, you typically share with an applicant, you know, proposed conditions.
I just know with sites being in West Ocean and a lot happening or proposed in that plan on Roseville, I mean, one side of Roseville, the Borough, the other side is, is the township. So, yeah, I understand most of it, and it's in the Borough, but there's, there's a lot tied, tied on Roseville, that's.
Yeah, and what happens, I mean, the whole point of this ordinance is that what happens on the, in, on the campus in the Borough affects residents of the township. So the goal was to try to look at it as it really is, a campus without those municipal boundaries. So it, I mean, I hope this process works out, and I think it will, and I think having a good planner to, to guide you and look at all the documentation is really key.
Okay, so it was good discussion. Barbara?
Just curious, if it's an 80/20, why are we paying 50-50?
Well, it's 80/20 in terms of what the issues might be, but to come up with what those issues are, you need to digest the whole information, so we want someone who's looking at it through.
To save the map.
Yeah, this is the, when we get to the conditional use hearing, and they have seven conditional use meetings, because it drags on and on in the Borough, that's on their cost. Our meetings will be like ours, but the actual initial, getting an engineer up to speed, reviewing what all the issues are, the traffic situation, it's all over the place, 50-50 sharing seems reasonable.
And with seven members of council, you're likely to have a longer hearing, because you have several, you know, two more people that have commentary to provide, so I agree with that.
Yeah. Margie?
So, would you finish your question?
Yeah.
Just to clarify then, so this cooperation between the borough and township, well, the goal would be to come up with just one conditional use decision?
No, there would be two separate decisions, but there would be like one set of like review comments. But there would be two separate decisions because there's two separate governing bodies that are reviewing this.
You'd have to do separate hearings.
Correct.
Hopefully it would be very similar.
Margie?
One last question, back to combining and when they, when the university comes to West Goshen to present, is it possible to have a joint meeting with the planning commissioners or planning committee people here? I mean, it's just a long presentation and I'm just thinking of the applicant that, you know, two hours in front of the planning commission and maybe even in front of the planning commission and supervisors.
So that, we're talking conditional use here, Margie, we're not talking about land development with planning commission, et cetera, so.
So they're not going to hear it?
The planning, the planning commission will review the application, but again, just like with the board supervisors, I don't think it makes logistical sense to combine both planning commission. If you're not combining the boards into one hearing, why would you combine a recommend area?
Right, I, I get that, but it's.
I guess my pushback would be, we've waited a long time for this plan. It had been promised a couple of years ago, if not longer. So the university's taking the time to present at the borough with an information kind of presentation. They're going to take some time, I believe, to talk to communities, go out and reach to the neighborhoods. So having them continue that process with the planning process makes sense.
Okay.
So my ask for Brian really is, obviously on a time and materials basis here, we're relying on you and Chris to keep a sharp eye on what is being done and whether the hours being put into the assessment is reasonable. So do you have any qualms about owning that?
The, no, because we're going to have a project kickoff meeting where it is very, where the expectations will be discussed and the product is going to be discussed.
Okay.
So I didn't feel comfortable getting into that level of detail unless the borough and township were willing to move forward because I didn't give them any information. They don't know what they're reviewing. They just, they're going to review the master plan.
Yeah, okay.
So they have no idea how much we're going to get.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll give them the information. I'd like to be able to give them the information earlier, so they have a week or two to review it before we just walk in and say, hear it.
Yeah.
That week. So maybe the meeting is pushed to the third week of September, but I want to give them at least two weeks to internalize it before we have our kickoff meeting. And I would invite Sean from the borough, I'd invite Sean to say that we do one, one meeting with all of us together.
Yeah.
And I did not have an issue being the point of the leading, leading the effort to keep, to manage the consultants.
Very good. Let's now look at that process to make, and press the board to read.
Yeah.
Okay, so this has just been a discussion tonight. We have a kind of timeline for this. The key thing, Chris, is for you to work with urban engineers to get the terms and conditions sorted out and then some of the borough will be looking at it before us, but we're planning on hopefully being able to prove this at a September, our first meeting in September, correct? Sounds good.
Question, we had discussed in prior meeting about putting, posting links to the master plan on the website, do we have that?
I've given that some thought and I would not recommend doing that. This is a conditional use application. We haven't done that with any other conditional use application, so I wouldn't recommend doing that because we can't treat this any differently than any other application that comes before us. I understand it's a unique application, I'm, it's also accessible through a right-to-know request. When it comes time for the hearing, we can post the information when the hearing is scheduled, but I don't think we should treat this any differently than anything else.
Is there a demand to see it?
I've gotten one right-to-know.
Yeah, the residents should be interested.
I've gotten one right-to-know request for it, and I filled that right-to-know request.
So, I mean, I'm not going to push this, I don't know what the demand is to see it, but just because we haven't done it with other applications, I don't think that we could us from posting this one.
Yeah, I would agree.
I don't know why we don't post other applications, it's something that we need to have a conversation about when we forward.
I post them, like with the materials when the hearing is scheduled, so I'll post it when the hearing is scheduled. If you want me to, it's fine, that's just my opinion.
Well, I, I don't see any reason why we need to keep this secret. I mean, this is going to affect the residents that are neighborhood, Roswell, they have a right-to-know system.
But would you feel, fulfill the right-to-know request if you provided them the link to the documents online or did you copy everything and provide it hard copy?
It's all, I have everything electronically, so I just upload every, it's all PDF files, so I just upload.
So the right-to-know request was satisfied by giving that first link to the.
Electronically.
So I, I'm on board with making it available.
It's fine, I can send it to page, good.
I agree.
I'll send it to page.
Yeah.
Under.
Every minute's fine, it's different, it's fine, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, I think we're finished with agenda item number ten. So we'll move on to agenda item number eleven, which is discussion regarding a request from the borough of Westchester for a financial contribution from the township for their Goose Creek flood mitigation study. Thank you, Chris, and good evening. Chris, this one's with you.
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening, is consideration of a request from the borough of Westchester for a 50% financial contribution from West Goshen Township for their Goose Creek flood mitigation study. For some background information, representatives from the borough of Westchester advised the township that they were undertaking this study that would run from Route 202 to Lacy Street in Westchester Borough. In the communication, it was stated that at the appropriate time, we'll engage West Goshen Township. There was no reference made to the township contributing financially to this project, nor were any representatives from the township engaged in the development of the scope of services for the request for proposal that was issued. At a recent meeting of the Westchester Borough Council, it was requested that the township be asked to pay 50% of the cost of the study. To my understanding, the borough received three responses to their RFP as follows: Remington and Vernick Engineers, Penney Associates, and T and M Associates. Speaking with the borough, it's my understanding that the project was awarded to Remington and Vernick Engineers in the amount of $38,500. As part of this analysis, I asked Brian, our township engineer, to review the proposals. He noted, he noted the following as it relates to his analysis. He scaled the channel length for Goose Creek and outlined the channel length in the borough and the township. Additionally, he noted concerns with the project in general, as it appears to be a borough project that the township will not have any input in. Brian also noted to me that there's an exclusion in the proposal from Remington and Vernick Engineers, it's exclusion number ten, that states that coordination with neighboring municipalities will not be performed. I share Brian's concerns. It is my recommendation that we do not contribute financially to this project.
Thank you, Chris. Board, any questions on, Chris just said what is proposed?
Are you no questions? I'm just shocked that they would even approach us for 50% of this project when we weren't even consulted. And where were they when they could pony up some cash for Montgomery Avenue?
Because they need to pass the thing.
So we're not doing a study, we're actually fixing a problem. My vote is no.
My vote is no.
Yeah. John?
I mean, it says very clearly here, the scope of work is, the borough is seeking three cost-effective options to improve the Goose Creek springback and mitigate flooding on South Franklin Street near Lynde Street, and that's in the borough. I don't, I don't quite understand why they thought that we would have, you know.
From my, from my understanding, this came up at their meeting in July. There was no discussion of this prior. That's my understanding.
I think that's a problem, no discussion plan. Unlike what we're talking about doing with them for the master plan. We're going to have a lot of discussion with them before you both decide to go ahead and third-party consulting. But this did not happen here in this case.
Yeah. Okay, so one comment I would make is, you know, we shouldn't preclude working together with the borough on studies because collectively we, the, you know, same issue with the university campus spreading across the borough and the township, the same with stormwater issues. They're, they're all over the area. So if there is upfront, early on, a conversation around, hey, we'd like to do a study of this and it would be good if we could combine, having the work done with something that's contingent with the issue, same issue within the township, I'd be all for trying to look at some of those kind of activities, but for this particular case, that didn't happen. So I guess the answer is no.
I completely agree. If they had involved Brian in the preparation of the RFP and designing the script of work, or Chris Peterson or myself, we'd have completely different.
Okay. So do we need to vote or we just, the answer's no?
Tell me to tell them now.
Okay, well, I'll take, I'll take a motion to respond to the request. Any negative in terms of the financial contributions for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nick. All in favor, say aye. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, is there any public comment? Oh, your thumbs up, okay. All, all in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five, zero. Agenda item number twelve, discussion of possible approval of the purchase of additional time clocks for the administration and wastewater departments. Chris?
So Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening, is consideration authorized the purchase of two additional time clocks, one for the administration and one for the wastewater department. The township implemented its new time clock system in the beginning of 2025, and since its initiation, we've discovered that having only one time clock in these locations creates some logistical issues and are seeking to, to install an additional time clock to alleviate these items. At our Assistant Public Works Director, Mike Cack, have obtained a proposal from TCP in the amount of $5,020.05. This expense was unbudgeted, however, if approved, the cost could be split between the minor capital allocations, both the general fund and the sewer fund. This will increase our annual maintenance and support contract by $853.20. So the total amount will be about $2,700 annually.
Thank you, Chris. Does, do we have any questions, board members?
Just for clarification, have we had a time clock now at the administration building and also one at the wastewater department?
We have one in, we have one in wastewater. The issue really with wastewater is they have people that work in multiple different buildings and we've discovered that it would just be, make more logistical sense to have a second one. We have one in administration and one in police, one in public works, in both public works buildings and one in wastewater.
Why, logistically, it would be better?
Just because we found that people are, it's delaying people from clocking in, clocking out. It's just causing backlogs.
Oh, like they're waiting in line to get them out?
Yep.
How long?
Few minutes. I mean, it's not overly burdensome. It would really be most beneficial for wastewater because they have to cross over from the other side of the campus to where the clock was installed.
I would see wastewater, administration, it's right here.
I think one, if you're going to, if you're going to choose one, I think wastewater makes them more logistical sense.
So this, so I'm clear, there's two over in the public works buildings.
Well, there's one, there's one in each one, there's one.
One over here and one over there, right?
One in building C, one in building D.
And then there's one in building A.
Correct.
Five minutes.
And one in building B for the police administration.
I, I think, I agree with what's been said, I think just an additional one for down the sewer, so it would be the sewer plant, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that is quite a walk around there, depending on where you're working. So if you need to get to somewhere, it'd be easier to clock in at a particular location that you know you have to go to. So I would support one, extra one. Is anyone different on the board?
I agree.
That's your suggestion, so.
Yeah, so everybody here, like everybody at the administration building has one, they're one each?
No, no, it's one, one total.
So you have one in building D, one in building C.
See, one in B.
A.
And one in building A. So this camp, this campus, there's four on this campus.
Right, and everybody has to use their clocking?
Mm-hmm. It's all centrally located.
All right, so we guys suggested a way forward here, so I'm looking for a board member to make a recommendation to purchase one additional time clock.
Yeah, for wastewater, I'll make that.
For wastewater, yes, sorry.
I'll second.
So John made the motion, Nick seconded it. Is there any forward comment or questions, any public comment or questions? Margie?
Just curious, I thought, I remember a conversation about an app that the employees were able to download on their phone and.
We disabled that.
Why?
Because we didn't want people clocking it from anywhere.
Well, I, yeah, I thought there was a way to track where they are when they clocked in.
Uh-huh.
And why?
Because we didn't want to create a situation for like body punching or anything like that.
And the time clock, just remind me, is based on fingerprint?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so a motion, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five, zero. Agenda item number twelve is discussion of possible approval.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, thirteen, is approval of the board of supervisors' meeting minutes from July first, 2025. So board members have had a chance to review the meeting minutes, and do you have any corrections to the content?
I'll note that I did receive some typo corrections from Mr. Hellman and Mr. Wallman, and I made those corrections.
Just typos, right?
Yes, just typos, nothing substantive.
Very good. Is there a board member willing to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July first?
Sure.
Okay, so Mr. Hellman made the motion and Mr. Wallman seconded. Is there any public comment or questions on the meeting minutes? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Motion carries by a zero. Agenda item fourteen is approval of the bills to be paid to the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. I'll make the motion to approve the bills to be paid for those funds, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any board member questions on the bills to be paid? Board members, any comments, questions?
I just have one, one question. On the manual bills list, I guess it's the second page of, that's for Verizon Wireless, is that the check number is 102869. There's like four charges there, all on that same number for cell phones. I'm just curious, how many cell phones do we have that were sporting or attached to?
I don't remember off the top of my head, the total number of, the total number of cell phones, but it's split up by each account within the budget.
Okay. And then, those are for, just a service for the month, correct?
Correct, that's just for the service.
And then there was for, 102870, there was a charge for jet packs?
Those are mobile, like 5G wireless devices that people take with them to like conferences and things like that.
And how many of those do we have?
I believe five. It's four or five.
So these were new ones or this is just a standing charge for those jet packs?
That's just a standing charge.
And the same thing for the air quotes?
That, I'm not a hundred percent sure what those are, but that's a standing charge, that's not anything new.
Any other questions on the bills to be paid from the board? Is there any public comment or questions on the bills? Margie?
Just a few off the top of my head. Do some of the employees don't have people?
There's, there's pager pay, but they don't carry them all the time.
Yes, I meant pagers. Why, why do they need pagers if they're working for themselves on bill?
Good question. I can't answer that.
I didn't know that we had employees with pagers.
There's, there's pager pay, I believe it's for when they're on call, but I'll find out for that.
I'm not sure we still have paid this. I'm not sure we still have pagers.
I don't know if they actually have pagers, I think that's just what it's called.
Do you pay them for?
Being on call?
I'll look into it.
And then, off the top of my head, I popped this up a couple of years ago, that I thought it would be a really nice idea, um, that when employees go to a conference, that they come and present to the public and the board where they went, what they learned, what classes they took, what their takeaways, um, to see this a couple of employees get to go on some really nice.
Give us a specific example, Margie.
Well, I noticed Lisa Vabata on there, so it's fifty-five dollars. And, like, what, what was that conference for, why did she go, what is she learning? Uh, I believe I've seen reimbursement, and I'm not picking on that employee. Um, Ed Ryan's does fine work, but, I mean, there's, goes to a lot of conferences every year. And it, I, I've been concerned about the amount of conference expenditures for many years, and, I don't know, I think we can pare down on some of them, and maybe limit just how many conferences per year each employee goes to. Coming up on by the season, that, if you look at that. There's so many girls, I'd love to go throw them on, it's like, I wish we had a committee that would just do this every month.
I think we've discussed conferences a while back. Um, I, my recollection is, and again, I'll have to go check the numbers, is this, this line item in the budget has not increased. In actual fact, since we have less staff at the management level now than we did three, four years ago, I would actually expect our conference costs have gone down considerably, so. Don't have the numbers in front of me, it's a good question. I think when we get to the budget process, we can have a more detailed discussion on it. And by the way, at the last meeting, I asked the chief about what he learned from his chief of police conference out in central PA, and he gave a response to that, so.
Yeah, and that's great, I know there's a lot of conferences that are in Pennsylvania or east of the Mississippi, but we're sending employees to, you know, I don't know if it's Las Vegas this year, but there seem to be some pretty cush things, where I think they could learn the same things and experience the same networking closer to home.
Okay, message received. Any other questions on the bills? Very good, we'll take the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five-zero. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-eight, is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.